I guess we'll call the order at 6:30 on the dot. The first item is the consent agenda. There's the minutes from the last, forgive me, there's a minute from the last meeting and three warrants. I believe the warrants were all paid quite a while ago. The last one, I think, was for the end of March. I don't know if everybody saw that. So can I get a motion?
So move.
A second. Okay, any, anybody want to say anything further on, on any of those items?
Just a quick question. Are those the warrants that you signed or you were to sign? Are those the same ones?
I haven't signed anything.
Okay.
Yet. I think we're still trying to work out some of these details.
Okay.
But I believe they've already been paid. This is just a formality of us getting them.
Right.
Fine.
So real quick, we, we signed up for DocuSign. We have a 30-day free trial. Mike, I'm pretty sure David put your email in and you should have received an email to sign up for and activate your account. So just check that. So we just did that. I think it was either yesterday or today. We, we got a 30-day trial. So what I'll do now is I'll go back and the warrants that you haven't signed, I'll scan them all in and then get them to you so you can sign them electronically.
Okay. And I did see that email.
And I tried to sign up, but I'm not, I'm not sure that when I put in my email and I did Granby Schools, I'm not sure that I'm linked to what would be the Granby Schools account because it asked me why I was trying this free trial. So I'm not sure. I'll, I'll reach out to David after or whatever, but I, I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't have multiple accounts going. So I filled out the form and we'll have to see.
Yeah, there should have been, so I was a little, I was a little confused too, but there should have been, once you tried to sign in, there should have been an email that said activate, that you would have went in and activated your account and then you would have been able to either change or set up your password. So just try it again, Jen, if you're, if you're having some problems, just reach out to David. He can probably walk you through it.
Yeah, I got the activate email and everything. I just didn't do it yet because I wasn't sure if I was actually in the right direction or not, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So if you go to that activate, you hit that button. It'll, it'll take you step by step on how to get into your account.
Okay, cool.
I did have one thing I wanted to ask about on one of the warrants. I think it's something Burke. Date was March 4th. There's three items on it. I just was wondering what that was all about. I know we were having some issues, but I, I thought the issues were earlier in the year and not, and not around the March timeframe.
So Burke is our oil vendor. So the only thing they would have been doing was coming to fill up our tanks. I'm not sure. Off the top of my head, we might have gotten some oil delivery in March. I know we just topped our tanks off a couple of weeks ago, which will get us through probably almost through the first of the year. So Burke, that would, that would be the only thing. Burke would be on their force for oil delivery. Why it's separated by three, I'd have to take a look, Mike, but that'd be the only thing that they would, that Burke would be there for.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we talked about them in the past. Now that you bring it up, there was three tanks. I couldn't, you know, we couldn't figure out why. And it makes sense, but one was so high and then two were smaller. And that's what really drew, you know, drew my attention. So.
Yeah, so we have two tanks at the high school and then one at East Meadow. So again, that March fill-up was, was our normal fill-up. And then, like I said, a couple of weeks ago, we had them come just to top our tanks off because I don't want to get into it, but what happens is we order X amount of gallons. With this winter being a pretty mild winter, so to speak, we didn't use the heat that much. So what happens is we buy the oil. I think our price is $1.91 a gallon. For whatever amount of oil we don't use, they hold it for us, but it's at a higher price. Which, which we can, there's a point where we can say to them, we don't want that anymore. They release it from us. So what we try to do is just fill our tanks at the end of the year at that $1.91 price and then just have them release whatever we have left.
Okay, it makes sense. I just, I just jumped out. I mean, I just thought I'd ask.
Yeah.
So is there anything else on, on any of these items? All right, so all those who are for, for it. I. All those opposed? All right, then the next item, forgive me again. The visitors. Do we have people who want to speak?
Yeah, we've got a few.
All right, you want to, you want to do that for me?
Sure. First one, Jessica Roy.
Hi, everyone. Good evening.
Were we able to mute them?
I believe Alex did.
Okay. All right. So where were we?
Okay, hello again. I'm telling you, this whole experience brings us so much change. That was a moment. We'll try this again.
I don't see you for that type of music, Jess.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, so let's try this again. Good evening. I hope that everyone is doing well during this time. We miss our students and families tremendously and look forward to seeing one another in person soon. I just want to speak briefly this evening to stress the importance of how our words matter, to stress that how we speak to one another in a variety of forums these days can hurt people and hurt the community in which we reside. In this particularly difficult time, it is most important to take extra care of one another and spread kindness and positivity. We ask this of our students every day, and I think it's important that we ask ourselves to do the same. Thank you and take care of yourselves and one another and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Next up is Robin.
Hi, thank you, Jessica. That was very well said. First off, I want to mention to you, I sent everyone on the school committee and the superintendent a copy and it was just a generic form of a resolution that the MTA is looking for all school committees in Massachusetts to adopt, to use, to fight for funding for our schools. And I ask that you consider it, please. Second of all, I said it the last time I was on and I want to say it again. Our priority needs to be our students and educating them, not on catching them up. And I do know and I pray that the cuts that will come to Granby School System do not affect the children in the classroom. And the last thing I wanted to mention was we have a very large class of fourth graders that were, was in two classrooms and now going into two. I just want to put that out there and keep it in your minds because 28 kids in the classroom is a lot of children. And unfortunately, that is a rare tragedy grade. So just keep that on your minds because it will be coming forward more than once and treat it kindly, please.
Thank you.
Stephanie Parent?
Hi, guys. Thank you all. First, I just wanted to make a quick comment just about, I appreciate these Zoom meetings, but they are kind of difficult to get the meeting information. I saw that Granby Public Schools on Facebook had shared it, but the links that they share don't work if you click on them. And then I didn't see any meeting ID or password on the agenda, which I was under the impression was required for open meeting. So I ended up asking actually Alex before at G-CAM and I ended up with two different IDs. He tried to, it was just kind of confusing. So if for the future, we could try to get all of that out on the agenda, would definitely be much easier to follow for people trying to log on remotely. This is very new to everyone. And then also, I really wanted, I don't know if she's on here, but Marcus there and I wanted to give a huge, I was so appreciative of all of his work last meeting. His slideshow was very insightful, very well done. I was really impressed with that. And with that, I was also a little, almost thrown off by some of his charts that showed the students maybe feeling a little overwhelmed with the amount of work, but not difficulty. I was wondering if at some point, because we might be remote learning for a while, if we were going to poll parents or any others, an actual like formal data to see how everyone's doing, what we can improve on or not. It would just be really great. I had a Zoom meeting with one of my daughter's teachers and it was pretty much about that. And it was really helpful for her and for parents. I don't know if that's something we could think about doing. And lastly, there was one other thing. Oh, shoot. I'll remember as soon as my three minutes are up, but I think that that should be good for now. Thank you, guys. I hope everyone's doing well.
All right. And then the last one that I see posted in the comments is Kim.
Hi, Kim Goldsmith, 239 Taylor Street, Granby. I wanted to also touch on the Zoom part of it with the access to the links and the information of how to sign on. Just kind of reiterating what Stephanie said, you know, we had a completely different link to get onto this meeting until I just happened to swing by the town hall last night just to look at what was posted. And we discovered that the, the link at the town hall that was on the board with the agenda was not the same that Adam had thought it was put out. So obviously that makes it hard for people to join meetings. And if that had happened and we didn't notice, apparently none of us would be able to get on tonight because there'd probably be no reason, way to reach you guys and find out. So in talking to Kathy Kelly Regan, I think what's supposed to happen is that Zoom information is supposed to be on the agenda itself and not listed like on a separate piece of paper. I think it's supposed to be actually on the bottom from what I understand. So I was just hoping that maybe for the future until this all ends, we could try to put that together properly so that people can get onto the meetings. That was that little bit of it. And the other thing I was wanting to discuss a little bit about was kind of following up with what Robin said in regards to class sizes. I know there hasn't been any discussion on what's going to be done within East Meadow to try to make up for the classrooms. I know the, the pause in trying to move sixth grade or part of sixth grade or whatever has happened, but there's still in the following weeks, there's been no discussion on what we're going to do actually inside the building. And, you know, also concerning that, you know, 23 school choice children were voted in at a, at a meeting a couple weeks ago. And, you know, we might be looking at kids only being able to go to school partial days. And I feel like adding in 23 children from out of town would not be beneficial for the resident children. And we might miss out on being able to send our kids to school more time during the week because we have to let other resident children, or other children from outside of town come into our school system. So that was just a concern that I've been thinking about lately with the 23 children added in. I don't know if that's been paused or if you guys are actively seeking children, what's going on at this time. But that was it. Thank you.
All right, here's my last.
Can I just clarify something? I, I think it was said that Adam sent out the link. I didn't send the link out. I'm assuming she meant Alex, but it was said that Adam sent the school committee link out. I, I didn't send the Zoom link out. Just want to make sure that's clear.
I want to apologize for any confusion. I got mixed up with another meeting. My bad.
All right, so anybody else for comments, you can either message me in the chat or pop off now if you'd like. Pop off mute.
I just would like to make a comment about the school choice. The classes that are large did not get any school choice accepted into them. The classes that were on the smaller side, those were the, where the seats for school of choice were offered. Plus, we had the outgoing seniors and we needed more children to balance that, or we would end up with a deficit if I'm not mistaken and have to go to the town for money.
I thank you. Was that, was that everybody? I didn't see anybody else. Oh, wait a minute. Charlene, I think just came off of mute. I'm not good at this, so.
No.
Okay. That's all I can see. I'm afraid, I'm afraid to do much. My son plays around with this with his Zoom meetings and I can't figure out what to do next. So. Are we ready to move forward? All right, the next item is the, this from Marcus. Now, I don't know if Marcus is on. I did see an M at one point. I don't know if that was him. So if you're there, Marcus, just let us know. Okay, I'm assuming he's not. So then the next item under new business, new co-ops for next fall for information only.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Allison Jordan, Assistant Principal and Director of Athletics at the high school. I have invited Eric. If you're wondering who Eric is, he is on the call as well. I'm going to ask Eric from South Hadley to come off mute and if you can, share your video. So you guys, oh, he already is.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. I'm not really a fan of your hat, but we'll take it for now. That's not better. Okay, so in the past, we have formed co-ops with our neighboring South Hadley School District. We do have existing co-ops already in place with South Hadley. We have recently started a new swimming co-op. We have had an existing hockey co-op as well with South Hadley that we've had for quite some time. We did try to pilot a tennis co-op with them this year, but there was no interest. Moving forward, I have shared a school committee presentation overview with you to inform you that we will be proceeding as a host school, as Granby is the host, and inviting South Hadley's cross-country boys and girls and their wrestling team to join Granby's athletic program this beginning as soon as this fall. So sharing that information with you as you've asked in the past to be notified when there are co-ops to be starting. So I wanted you to have this information and hear it before I go ahead and proceed at the MIAA level. It has been approved by the PVIAC, but as you know, I've explained in the past that there are several steps in a process before a co-op can be approved. So I wanted to share that with you before proceeding and get your blessing. And I think Eric wanted to share his thoughts too with you.
Yeah, um, this is, this is bailing us out of South Hadley. We have a budget shortfall like anything we've ever seen. And we've, it's come around now where they're going to start cutting athletics and which is too bad for the kids. They're just losing those opportunities. So reaching out to Allison, you know, toss the idea around and, you know, here we are. This would, this would help our students out so they don't lose that opportunity because the kids who do participate in those sports really enjoy those sports. And so this is the best way where, you know, we don't have to lose the program completely and it's going to help Granby out, just filling roster spots and, you know, hopefully some great athletic success.
All right, so you, you don't need us to vote on this or anything, right? This is just information, like you said.
Yep, I don't believe there's a vote involved. Just wanted to bring this information to you before you heard it from anybody else. And, you know, I think we've shown that we have a nice rapport with South Hadley. Our wrestling team especially has grown quite fond of one another. For the past couple of seasons, we've been already sharing practices and a shared space and travel. So, I mean, it makes sense that we do and, you know, would appreciate the school committee's support moving forward.
Yeah. So they're going to be wearing our hat though, right? Is it? And that, and that, and that the one he's wearing now?
Yep, for clarification. No.
I told Allison, I coached girls soccer over at Granby for two years, like 2012 and 13. I wish I had a baseball hat from the Granby baseball team, but it never happened. So I'll gladly, I got plenty of Granby apparel. I'll wear a Granby hat.
I know. Those gray hats are quite popular. We could maybe work something out there to give you a hat. But to clarify, Mike, what happens is they would register using family ID and so they would be registered under Granby Junior Senior High School. So. And yes, there's, there's Coach Woods. Yes. Hi, Coach Woods. There's that hat Eric wants. So I'm going to go off mute, but. But yes, so they would register under our hat here at Granby High School and our co-op for hockey and swimming would still be under their hat.
Okay. Did anybody else want to ask anything or bring anything up?
Just a couple of quick notes, I think. One, thank you, Eric. Thank you. Allison, thank you as always. We always appreciate and look forward to these types of collaborations. So it's great. Just to be on the safe side, I don't recall the last time we did this with hockey and all that. Can we just double check, make sure that there is no?
Is he breaking up with anyone else?
Yeah.
Can't hear you, Emery.
How about now?
Yep.
All right. All right, so there are two channels actually for technology purposes. So when my computer jumps to the other one where there are the other laptops, I guess, just drops out. So I apologize for that. What I was saying, I don't know if you heard the first part, but the more important, the more important formal part for me is whether or not we need to vote for this type of collaboration as a school committee. I was saying that I'm good either way, but just to make sure that we are doing what we need to do. If we can double check, that will be great.
I don't think we voted for the swim one in the fall for winter.
No, that's, that's fine. That's just, yeah, I'm just, all I'm suggesting is just double checking.
Okay, so if I was to double check, we have your blessing regardless? And if it said we needed to?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, I just want to know because there's stuff on my end that is timely where I have to submit a form stack that goes to MIAA.
I don't think there is any penalty for voting something that we don't need to vote for. So I'll make a motion to approve the collaboration with South Hadley for wrestling and cross-country in the upcoming school year.
I'll second.
Okay, anybody else want to say anything about this before we hold the vote? Okay, all those four?
Right. Great.
All those opposed? All right, looks like either way now you're covered. So there's nothing to worry about.
Yeah, and I think the school committee will need hats too.
Oh, yeah, I want a hat.
But you have the Grammy ones though, right?
Of course. Good point, Mike.
I need a South Hadley one for swim.
All right, so we could use both then.
All right.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Get yourself Hadley.
All right, the next item is the employee handbook.
I need Carol. If she's in the waiting room or.
She's here.
She's muted, Alex. Yay. Hi, Carol.
Hello.
Carol.
I'm going to mute.
Hey, Adam. Okay, so the employee handbook, well, let me back up. We had a tiered focus monitoring review this year from the Department of Education that focused on special education and civil rights. They discovered that our employee handbook hadn't been updated to include our district accommodation plan as well as an updated bully plan. So I worked with Jaclyn and the principals to update several parts of the the handbook and it is now in front of you for approval.
Okay. This was in addition to, I think we had to vote a few weeks back on a couple of other findings. And this is, and this is another piece of that, that same, that same review.
We didn't have, we, this is the only finding from that review.
All right, I thought, I thought we had to update a couple of other things. Maybe that was another review of some sort, but I can't, I can't remember anymore.
Well, the tiered focus monitoring with special ed and civil rights, all of special ed was no, no concerns. And the only area of concern was the bully plan in the employee handbook.
Okay, and that's, and that's in there now. And those are the only updates to the handbook at this?
Yep.
Anybody else want to ask anything? I think we need to vote on this. Doesn't say vote on the agenda, but I'm assuming if you're looking for us to approve it, that, that means a vote.
Yes, I, we need you to approve it so that we can put it on the website and release it to the staff.
Okay. I know historically, we've, we've taken a couple of weeks or a couple of meetings, one, the first one to, to review and read and the second one to vote. I don't, I don't know if that's, if that's the same way we want to go tonight. I'm going to kind of put that out there to like Emery and Jen and Jim and Jen to get their thoughts.
So you're asking whether or not we're going to consider this as a second reading?
Yeah.
Okay.
So let, let me just say that the, you've already approved the student handbooks.
Yes.
And so the bully plan that it was put in the student handbooks is now in the employee handbook.
Okay.
And you approved the student handbooks.
All right.
That was the only addition, was just that piece?
That piece and, and a link to the, the curriculum accommodation plan. Because the link that was in the original employee handbook didn't go anywhere.
All right, so I think what we need to confirm is that we're going to call this the second reading tonight. Is that, is that the way you ordered it, Emery? Or skip the first reading and just?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Anybody have anything to discuss on, on that? All right, any concerns or any? All right, so can I get a motion? To approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the updates to the employee handbook for 2019, 2020.
I'll second.
Hey, again, you know, once again, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
I have a quick question.
Okay.
So this just brings it online with, so the student and the employee handbook now match with the bullying plans?
Yes.
That's really the, the change, right? And we, we just, I think that's what we were thinking of, Mike, is that we just approved the student version.
Yeah, that was the one Stephen. Yeah, that was the one Stephen had presented, right? Just there were many changes to that. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So a, a, a quick question for me. So you know, even my motion was reading based on what we have on the document saying that 2019, 2020. Do we, I don't recall, but do we make updates to these documents every year and do we vote on those? I remember the student handbook conversations, but do we have annual review of employee handbook?
We don't do an annual, but there will be changes to the employee handbook because of the policy changes. So once we finish all of the policy and then fully update the employee handbook, you'll vote on the employee handbook as well.
Okay. So the reason why I'm asking that is whether we need the dates on them? Is it just memorializing the timeframe we approved it for? Or does it memorialize the time we approved it at?
The time you approved it at.
Okay.
So for example, if there were no changes necessary, you, you approved it in 2019, 2020. It continues until we need to update it again.
Makes sense.
All right. Good. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Another unanimous vote.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Yeah. You too.
You too.
Uh, next one is Vanpool. MOA.
Uh, yep. So I put this in the folder last week along with a document that showed the savings that we would see or the town would see once we would enter into this MOA. So what this is, is agreeing to pay Vanpool, who is our special education transportation provider. We agreed to reimburse them 78% of the costs for April, May and June. So we got the okay from Chris. Vanpool had already had some generic language drafted from other districts that they had agreements with. So they sent it to me. I forwarded it to our attorneys. They made some minor changes in the language, just some that would protect us in case there was any way we wanted to get out of this. And I'd like to vote on it tonight. Again, I put the savings in there too. I'm not sure if anyone has any questions on there. We'd save about, I think it's $17,000 over the next, or for April, May and June. And then we'd actually have a surplus of about $90,000 in that sped transportation line that would then go back to the town at the end of the year. I'm not sure if anyone has any questions on anything, but I, we would need to vote the MOA. So we can then pay the invoices for Vanpool.
Adam, this is not, is any portion of this 78% related to any type of services that were rendered by this?
Yeah. So um, at one point I did forget. So actually we agreed in writing to 78%. Actually on the invoices, we may have gotten a little more of a discount only because, and Vanpool said this at the beginning, as they get more information on money they may be receiving from the CARES Act and all the federal state money, because of the pandemic, they will then funnel that down to districts and to us. So I think we agreed at 78% and I think we were paying 75% for April and May. That, that information's in your folder. I don't know it off the top of my head. So they will, if they are going to receive some money from the federal government, they will filter that down to the districts that they have agreements with. So I just wanted to make that point clear.
Emery, to your question. Maybe lower than 78% our portion if they do receive funds from?
It could be so. And it already, yup. And it already, it already is the last couple of months or the invoice that we have, I think it's about 75%. It's on the invoices. I can forward them, but it's actually less than what we agree to. Um, but to your question, and again, it's that ongoing question of whether we should be paying for services that we don't receive. And yeah, they, they didn't provide us any services, obviously for April, May and June. The way Chris had, had interpreted the contract is we're not necessarily paying for busing on a per day basis. We're really paying for the privilege to have buses to provide transportation. So he was comfortable with, with agreeing with our vendors to pay a portion of the contract for services that haven't been rendered.
So this, this sheet you have in there, is this what we save or is this what we pay?
Yup. So the sheet that is in there, the breakdown that is in there, let me just bring it up real quick.
See it in there by?
So you'll see the, yup. So you'll see the adjusted total. That's what we'll end up paying for the, the April, May and June is about $50,000. That might be adjusted, that amount. When I received this in the beginning of May, this is what the amount was. What we would have been paying if they were providing 100% service would have been that 67,438 number. So we were paid about 50,000 over April, May and June. It could, it could, that, that might be adjusted. So as of now, that's the number. It, it, it might be adjusted based on what Vanpool receives in federal money.
So then I have two more questions. Overall, I keep, I thought I keep seeing kind of, and maybe this is just me because I confuse things, but shifting numbers as far as the overall savings at the end of the year due to, due to busing overall. Not just a special busing, but first student also. Do you, do you know where we sit with, like, how much are we going to have not spent if we pay these amounts?
Yup. So, so I know for Vanpool is we'll have a surplus, a savings of about $90,000 based on the article that was voted on at town meeting last year. So I know for the sped transportation, it'd be around that amount. We're still waiting on, we have language from First Student that again, because we're in the contract with Ware and Belcher Town, we forwarded that language to Fred and our attorneys. And we're waiting to get that back. And then we'll move forward with First Student. Right as of now, I don't know what that savings will be until we get that, we get that back. We agreed upon 42% with First Student, but I don't want to do anything until we know, you know, until we have the MOA sign and it's, it's executed. So for right now, I know First or for Vanpool will have a savings of about $90,000 that can go back to the town.
Okay. So that leaves another question. So I still have two more. One, the first one is a follow-up. If we're going to have a surplus of 90,000, that's a little more, I'm sorry, a little less than half more. So it's another $40,000 that's not listed on the sheet. Was that from, from earlier in the year? We didn't use them as much as we had thought we would? Like where did that surplus come from?
Yeah. So I'd have to, I'd have to look into those details to, to get you that answer. I'm not, I'm not sure right now, but I can, I can certainly, I can certainly give you that, that information, Mike.
Okay. I, I just want, so, so the reason I'm asking that is because it doesn't look like if we've already saved, you know, like almost half of what we were saving now for most of the school year, what would our school year have looked like without, without this?
Yeah. So, so the, the, the amount that was approved back in June for this year, I think was three, a little over $300,000. And it's all based on, on routes for our special education students. So that number is, it's a projection. We'd like it to be close, but it's a projection. I'm not sure what changed throughout the year and why we would have some surplus. But I can certainly look into that and get you the answer.
Okay. And then, and then the last thing is this, this money that we do give them, do we know where they're going to spend it? Like, is it going to their staff or is it just, we're going to give it to them and whatever they, they pay, they pay?
So for, I know for First Student, we encourage them to use the 42% that we were going to pay to cover their fixed costs, whatever those may be. And to keep their drivers out on, on unemployment. For Vanpool, similarly, it's, it's for fixed costs. There's some, some districts, I want to say actually it's Ware or Belcher Town, that Vanpool is still delivering meals for them. And that's how they're kind of getting around, they're, they're paying 100% of their contract because Vanpool is essentially still working for them. And I have all of the details. I think the contract language is in there, but I have the details, the negotiations that went into, to this percentage that I can certainly share with the committee too.
Okay. That, that was it from my questions. I don't know if anybody else has any?
I just hope that going forward, we have better rules around these negotiations. And you know, like Mike's question, what, why we are, for instance, paying such percentage of the contract. When we know that when the time comes, we're not going to have the same sympathy when we need the funds to be able to do certain things. Like, you know, Robin was saying early on, we're going to need those funds for our students. Hopefully we can have the same sympathetic conversations around budget time. That, that's all I have to say. And I know, I'm not really pointing fingers at anyone. I know that we are doing our best as members of our communities to make sure that we do what you just shared, Adam. To make sure that, you know, folks who are providing services to our school district, they are employed and all that. But I hope that we can also keep in touch with these folks to make sure that if they do receive funds through, you know, payroll protection or other funding, that we benefit from the federal funding that goes their way. And then we get a little more in return.
Yeah. And Vanpool, they've been great. And obviously they're, they're a smaller operation, obviously compared to First Student. And I've been talking to their, you know, CEO, the two, I, I think heads over at Vanpool who kind of worked with me and the admin team to kind of negotiate this percentage. They've been great and they were very forthcoming and saying, you know, we can agree to this percentage. But if we end up getting some money back from the federal government, you guys will certainly see that in, in the, the billing for the next three months through June. So it's a little easier when we've had conversations with them. As you guys know, First Student is such a large operation and they provide a lot of regular day transportation for districts throughout the state. So there, there are districts throughout the state and Springfield's one of them that's just not paying First Student for the rest of the year. They're, they're just not going to pay them because they aren't providing services. There's other districts that are going to pay them as if they were providing services. And there's some districts that fall in between there. Again, because they're such a big operations and there's a few, you know, different regions in the state, it's hard for everyone to kind of come up to a, a similar agreement with First Student. So being able to have a, a personal relationship with Vanpool certainly helped us out in this situation.
Yeah. And thank you. And that's, you know, even though I, you know, my message was behind some veil, you know, to make it clear, it's not what we're trying to do. It's that in the example that you just shared, the state's guidance was completely off on some of these things. I know that this whole crisis caught us, caught all of us off guard. That's fine. But in terms of, you know, some rules applying here, not there, and just leading, leaving all these conversations and negotiations to the goodwill of school districts, I, I don't think it is really good governance on their part. Of course, you know, I'm not sure that a lot will change in the near term. But I'm hoping that at least, you know, looking forward, we can be better prepared for situations like this.
Yeah. And I totally agree. And honestly, to, not to defend First Student, but why, you know, I'm, I'm providing transportation throughout the state. Why is it okay for one district not to pay me, but it's okay for another district to pay me? Whatever, whatever that may be, why, why is that okay? That's not fair to them. You know, in our defense, obviously we're going to, you know, we negotiated at the lowest rate possible. So it's good for us. But yeah, I can, I can understand if, if they'd be frustrated too, why, why would one district pay us and not the other? It doesn't make any sense. So yeah, again, it obviously did catch everyone by surprise. There were a few things probably weren't handled, you know, the best way possible, unfortunately. But we were, we're trying to make the best of it. So again, Vanpool, we agreed in terms. And now, once you guys vote on it and approve it, we'll, we'll get that rolling. And First Student, we're still waiting for that language just to be approved, reviewed and approved by our attorneys.
Yeah. And you know, I can, I can imagine that this didn't take some negotiation and a lot of conversations. So thank you and whoever else was involved in those conversations. Thank you.
Yep. Welcome.
And do we have it in writing that it would, if they get money back, it'll be less than the 78%? Or is that just a verbal thing?
Um, I can certainly get it in writing. It was, it was verbal through email. So I mean, technically that is contractually based. It's in writing. But I'm, I'm, I could certainly get that in writing if it's not in the MOA. I'm not sure if it is or not. I, I don't believe it is, but I can certainly get something in writing if you guys would like to see it.
Yeah. I didn't, I didn't see that in the MOA. What I, what I did see though, was that if the town decided to not pay, that decision supersedes this contract.
So that was the language that our attorneys added that Vanpool was okay with and signed. So that change came from our attorneys to, to protect us that, not that we would, but if in any case we say we're not paying anymore, that we would, we were legally allowed out of the contract.
Okay. Yeah. Cause that was like the last paragraph. All right.
Yeah. Yep.
And Jim, I think, I think you were going to say something?
I was just going to point that out because it seems like the, the chief financial officer almost expected that, that if you can't give it, as you've already said, Adam, can't pay when services haven't been provided. He almost was expecting that as a possibility.
Again, and I was, and I was very forthcoming with them a couple of months ago. Again, when the guidance was kind of iffy from the state on, yeah, you can pay. If you don't pay, it's okay, but you should pay to keep these vendors in business. And we were, we were very clear with them that listen, as of right now, we, we aren't going to pay you guys for, for your services. As unfortunate as it is, our plan is to not pay you guys. And they understood. They, they certainly understood. So it was kind of, it was kind of good that, you know, Chris interpreted the contract the way that he did and, and thought it was, you know, thought it was the right thing to do to provide them some reimbursement for their services. So they were grateful to say the least that, that we were willing to work with them and, and help them out. And again, they, they said if, you know, whatever happens with the CARES money, if, if they see some type of reimbursement on their end, it'll certainly, they'll, we'll see it on some adjustments at the end of June. So.
Okay. That's only fair. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any, any, any other discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Special Education Transportation Contract Amendment with Vanpool Transportation.
I'll second.
Hey, any, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right.
Thank you guys.
The next item is graduation update. I think that's Mr. Sullivan. There he goes.
Hi, everybody. How are you tonight?
Hi, Steve.
Good, Steve. How are you?
Good. Thank you. I just wanted to kind of provide a brief update and answer maybe some questions that people might have in terms of graduation. As we all know, at this point on April 21st, the governor closed schools for the remainder of the school year. I think even up to that date, we were kind of keeping our fingers crossed that we would be able to have some sort of traditional close to the school year, including graduation. You know, that became somewhat unrealistic at that point. So I worked with Cheryl a little bit and pretty much that night I reached out to students, parents and staff to establish a graduation work group. We, I got a great response from more people than I was able to have as part of a work group. I felt it was important that we had a variety of stakeholders, but also. group, I felt it was important that we had a variety of stakeholders, but also wanted to keep the number manageable, I think we all know, once groups get too big, then it can be even more of a challenge just keeping that group focused, but this has been a great group to work with, we have nine students, nine seniors are on the work group, we have six faculty members and six parents. We met about a week after that, was our first meeting, we've met every week since at least once, we've also had some, we broke the work group up to produce some proposals at one point, so there have been additional group meetings for members as well beyond our whole group meetings. One of the first things that we did was we established an email address that people could share ideas with us, that we could look at, so we were accepting input beyond that group of twenty-one, that was all posted on the junior, senior high school website, I think the day after, Jackie had it posted on the website the day after our first meeting. We've since gone through each of those ideas, we discussed pros and cons, then, like I said, we broke the whole work group up into small work groups, there were four, each of them had a all, a parent, a student and a faculty member, and they came back to the whole group, and they presented a Plan A and a Plan B for their graduation, and we've talked about a lot of things, but I think really after that first meeting, we all turned our attention to graduation. You know, we talked about prom, we talked about senior night, senior banquet, all those things, but I think graduation was what most people were concerned about, it was made pretty clear by the students that there were two things really that they wanted from this, one, they wanted something where there was something where they could celebrate each other and with family, so we talked about parades and things like that, and I think overall, they just felt those were a little too impersonal, and they wouldn't be able to celebrate each other in a parade, and they wanted to stick with that June thirteenth date, which was our originally scheduled date. So with those specific things in mind, those work groups came back, and they provided us with some variety in terms of details, but I was somewhat surprised, they came back with really two very similar options, drive-in style options, and the two options, the different, one of the major differences was where they would be held, one being at the junior, senior high school, and one at Dufrane Park, and there was also some talk about a virtual graduation, but students didn't, the students on the work group didn't feel as though that was personal enough. After the groups presented, we created a survey, myself and the students on the group created a survey, and we sent it to the entire senior class, the entire senior class voted, and they clearly liked the drive-in idea much better than the virtual, they, for all intents and purposes, eliminated the virtual option, they took that off the table, and to make it even more challenging, they split the Dufrane Park and junior, senior high school option literally right down the middle. So, we made a recommendation to the superintendent on last Friday, her and I have spoken a few times since, I think our recommendation was that we proceed with a drive-in style graduation ceremony. Of course, like following social distancing practices, appropriate social distancing practices, we're bringing it to the school committee first, of course, but, you know, with everybody here's blessing, I would like to bring it to the Board of Health, I believe their next meeting is next week, just to make sure we have their stamp of approval. And after talking to the superintendent, I think as great as Dufrane Park would be, and I think there's some advantages Dufrane Park has that we don't have at the junior, senior high school, we feel the best option would be the junior, senior high school because of some of the logistics and really having it in our own backyard, I think takes some other variables off the table. Another thing that I can't really, like, pull my attention away from is in the event of rain, we're planning this to be a rain or shine event, and I worry a little bit if we had rain, even the days leading up to the graduation, that Dufrane Park could be challenging in terms of mud and things like that, so we have a couple other things planned that we're trying to do on campus, and I think this would be an extension of our efforts to celebrate this class, I think that's one, that's our largest goal, is this class, as all of our students have, have had so much taken away from them, and our seniors are really mature, and they understand that this is no one's fault, but it doesn't, that doesn't make them feel any better that they're missing out on this rite of passage, that this tradition that they've seen, that they've seen their predecessors go through in previous classes, and I think that's really important to them, and we wanted to kind of give them something that is memorable, has, that can produce positive memories for them as well, and I think we're inching closer, I think with your blessing, we'll be able to start getting to some details. You know, some things we've discussed are the potential for only two cars per family, we're looking into students being able to be in seats at appropriate social distances rather than them having to stay in their cars for the whole ceremony, we're looking for FM transmitters so that it can be broadcast from two people's cars, we tested out speaker systems today, we made sure we had enough parking today, you know, we're, we're getting quotes for tents and things like that, that we can have on campus, and being on campus, we just have a little bit more control of it. So there are still some details that need to be worked out, but felt as though it was important that we provide at least a brief update for everybody, so that you know that we are making good progress, I think it's been an inclusive process, and really appreciate the team members, I would like to acknowledge all of them, but I'll pause now for any questions that people might have.
I mean, I think all the work you put into it so far has been great, sounds like you really got a lot of people together, which is always tough to do, and tried to incorporate all their ideas. I am a little bit interested in some of the details, though, as, as we get nearer to it, how we would do some of these things that are really important to the graduation day, but I'm not going to dwell on those right now, I just kind of like the plans that you've laid forth so far, and that's, that's just my opinion.
Stephen, my question is related to, the rain is understood, but, you know, summertime, the heat can be a factor as well, so are we saying that students who will be outside their cars will be under a tent, so they're protected, is that how we're planning it?
As of right now, the tent that we're looking into would only cover the stage, so the students wouldn't be under a tent, but just a stage in case of rain or anything like that, you know, and I think it would be similar to a school that has their graduation outside on a football field or anything like that, that, you know, students could certainly take precaution, I do anticipate it would be a somewhat shorter ceremony than typical, although last year, with a traditional ceremony, we were at just about an hour and a half, you know, we've talked about trying to make sure we keep the meaning, but also condense it in some way, so there might not be as much need for people to use the bathrooms, although there would be bathrooms for people to use, you know, sanitizing, things like that quickly in the moment could be challenging, but like, those are some of the things we've considered in terms of what speeches are we going to do, what speeches aren't we going to do, you know, I think because we've been out of school for so long, in talking to Mr. Sargent, the band, it would be a bit of a challenge to have them play some of the music that they would traditionally play, you know, they might be able to do some things, but pulling them together would be additional people, so we're trying to keep all those factors in mind.
All right, anybody else want to, want to ask or say anything?
I'll second what you said, for my final comment on this, it looks like there is a lot of work that went into it on your part and on the part of all those who participated in the process, very thoughtful, you explored all the options, so thank you very much for that, because I think we'll agree that this is an important rite of passage, they are missing on some of the other traditional elements of their senior year, but I'm happy to hear that they will hopefully have a good graduation ceremony.
Thank you, yeah, and I think some of those other things that they are missing out, we're not giving up on those yet either, I think we've talked a little bit about not an either-or strategy, but a both-and strategy, planning the graduation first, but also looking to options maybe in August, or even as far out as the Thanksgiving weekend, when people might be returning, having a prom or a banquet type event, but this is just the first hurdle that we want to get over.
I think there's a twenty-year grace period for a prom, so we should be able to do it.
All right, anything else from anybody? All right, so thank you, Stephen.
Can I just, I know it's a little corny, but can I just acknowledge the, the members of the team very quickly, if I could just read their names, I just want to, for the record, make sure people know who's been a part of this work.
Yep, yeah, go ahead.
For staff members, we have Jen Blackburn, Allison Jordan, Molly Pinkney, Sarah Bearden, and Norm Mercine. For parents, we have Nancy Hoffenberg, Katie Moriarty, Tori Sperry, Katie Govan, Carolyn Willett, and Kevin O'Grady. And for students, we have Amir Karim Shahih, Audrey O'Connor, Braden Dwinell, Carol LeBlanc, Celia Heward, Jordan Healy, Kalen Crodo, Paige Parlingas, and Shannon Tremblay. So, want to make sure that I thank them, because they put in a lot of the work, working in small groups, it's really their ideas, and I think everyone's agreed that we want the students to drive this process, and in addition to our full group meetings, our, the students, the nine students and I have met before every full group meeting, and then sometimes after every groupful meeting, to kind of hammer out some additional details and things like that, and they've really been a pleasure to work with, I appreciate their input and feedback throughout, so thank you to all of them.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. All right, moving on to old business, Remote Learning Plan, do you have anything on that?
Nope, no updates on the remote learning plan.
Okay, then, East Meadow class size, I know that was brought up in the visitors' comments, I, I mean, I don't, I don't think we've really spoken about that recently because we don't know what next year looks like at this point, so it's kind of hard for us to make a lot of plans now for something that may not matter come September and October, but I think some, 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 some things have started to come out over the past couple of weeks, so I'm assuming that over the next couple of weeks, maybe by the time the state digests that as their input, and then the town gets what the state suggested as their input, we should be able to start clarifying some of that. And all of that honestly does have an impact, even though this item was on the agenda from before, we do, we do, and we do need to understand what's going to happen, I'm just not sure that there's much to talk about it right at this moment in time. I don't know if anybody else in the committee agrees or disagrees, or wants to say anything.
So, if I may, the governor on Monday put out the reopening of the Commonwealth in four phases, and at the very end of that presentation, there is recommendations or ideas around public K-12 education, and then post-K-12, post-12 higher ed, so the directive really is that within the next few weeks, DESI should be coming out with guidance, most likely aligned with Board of Health, so that we have a little bit more detail about what we're looking at in terms of how to create safe, healthy spaces for children to return to, so it is premature to even really begin talking about next year, but we are hopeful that within the next two weeks, DESI is going to come out with their guidelines as far as how to return to school.
And then I think, in my opinion, at that point, we keep our fingers crossed and hope that nothing else pops up during the reopening that forces people to rethink things that have already been stated, that's, that's just me saying that, but I think there's always that potential.
Is there anything going on, Cheryl, as far as, you know, related to remote learning, in case the period gets extended? So, you know, this, this came very suddenly, and I think I asked a question at a previous meeting, whether DESI had any plans or they were considering anything, is there a, is there a contingency plan for remote learning? Yeah, it doesn't have to be a crisis like this, and hopefully, we never find ourselves in a situation like this, but if we need to, is there, are they planning for future contingencies?
Yes, they are, DESI is actually doing a couple of work groups, one particularly around developing curriculum that is, I guess, remote friendly, and what that looks like, you know, basically, everybody flipped the switch and went to remote learning with the curriculum that they had in place, and then DESI came out and said, these are the power standards that we really want you to address moving forward, that work is going deeper, and I think we'll look more broadly at the whole school year to figure out, not only what are the power standards, but also what are the, what are the resources that DESI has vetted, just like they vetted our textbooks and materials and supplies for in-class, traditional delivery, you know, they vet and let us know what is aligned to the standards, they're doing the work on looking at online digital resources, so that we're making very good choices about programming that we're recommending or providing for students. So, two things are happening, the work group on the actual curriculum, and then the work group on the resources relative to remote learning, so that's going to go on all summer.
All right, thank you.
What about, you know, DESI had come out, and we had to end the Blizzard Bag program because, you know, the whole remote learning thing wasn't what they wanted to do, and now here we are, we're forced to do remote learning, and we had thought maybe something was coming down the pike anyway, how they were going to branch out, but has there been any talk about that, I mean, you know, really, I can't imagine how any school is going to stand for having snow days now, knowing that they did remote learning for sixty-plus days, you know, and some schools.
Yeah, we haven't gotten any indication of a change in policy around remote learning for inclement weather, Blizzard Bags. I do know that, that there still is a concern that remote learning is problematic for a portion of our special education students in that population, so there is work going on around making sure that we're providing for their education, and if they're not making progress, just as they would in a, in a traditional classroom, brick and mortar, what are we going to do to make sure that they are making progress towards their individual goals? And that still is a concern, you know, that was the initial concern around Blizzard Bags, and why it was basically shut down, and now they're, they are talking about that at the state level, how can we ensure special education students, 504 students, EL students are receiving the supports they need to be making progress in the curriculum?
So, another topic, I think, while we're kind of talking about this, it would be nice if the, if the state, or maybe even CES, and I don't know if that's something CES we get involved in, but coming up with a list of apps and tools that we could use, and making sure, because I know, I know we've spent a lot of time trying to vet these ourselves, but it would have been nice to have the state or somebody else kind of vet, say, these eight apps are similar, they're all good as far as we're concerned, so that you didn't, or our staff didn't have to do all that research.
Right, so that's what I was talking about, DESI has put out heat maps of curriculum that's being implemented, that's aligned to the standards, Massachusetts has very rigorous standards, not all of the textbooks that are available meet those standards for Massachusetts, so they have heat maps that actually align the resource to our standards, so very quickly we can decide whether or not to even invest looking at a product, they're doing the same for remote learning.
Okay, and now, is that something new, or had they been doing that? Okay. And now is that something new or had they been doing that for a while?
I think it was part of the heat maps, but now it's really ramped up.
Okay. I just, I just know we've had discussions in the past with this district is using this and we're not, and how come and.
Yep.
I'd like to make a comment here on some of the meetings I've been on with the MTA. It has been brought up by other presidents, a lot of inequity in the learning. Because in your larger cities, you have, oh, how do I want to say it? People who do not have internet and who do not have access to Chromebooks and food even, and how towns and cities need to bring that forward and make sure that that particular population is getting the education that they need. Because there are cities and they're not, they're right around us, that instead of having online learning, they're still handing out packets because families do not have internet or access to the equipment that they need. So that's another thing that will be in DESI's remote learning plan.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else want to jump in on this? Again, I think we're going to keep the line item, class sizes on the agenda, at least for now, because I, I do think it's something that we still need to solve for. I just don't think this week there's really anything new to add. But feel free in the next few weeks to jot, jot down some thoughts or ideas to bring up during this section. That being said, standard reports. Cheryl, did you, did you have something?
Okay, I do, and actually it's a request of the school committee. So last week, late last week, I got a memo from the town administrator, Chris Martin, regarding a request for a new budget. I wasn't able to talk to Chris until this week. So because the legislature and the governor have not put out new numbers and the revenue forecast is so poor. Most municipalities, including Granby, are going to a 1/12 budget, which means they budget 1/12, but it's based on FY20 numbers. So he's asked that we budget, we create a budget that is based off of FY20. And that we also do a 2% reduction to that. And we create a second budget that's a 5% reduction to that. Now, I've been pretty clear that in 2008, when the recession hit, that a couple of things happened. Federal stimulus money came, Granby received about a half a million dollars for two to three years. And really got us as the school department through that recession. I would anticipate that kind of funding coming again. So I don't want to create hysteria, but I do want to meet the request of Chris. The other thing in 2008 is that chapter 70 and net school spending were not reduced. And so Chris and I have had several conversations about that. The problem is, is we just don't know. There's no indication coming out of DESI or the legislature whether chapter 70 or net school spending are going to be adjusted. If you remember, our net school spending this year went up about 200, correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, about 250,000?
Yeah, about that. Yeah, I think it was like 243 to be exact.
Right. So that's, that's our FY21 number. So you know, reducing off of FY22% and then 5%, if net school spending doesn't change, then we can't make those reductions because we would be under the requirement for our foundation budget for net, for meeting net school spending. So there's a lot of moving parts. There's not a lot of information. So what I would ask is for us to check our schedules for perhaps next Tuesday night. If we might be able to meet and just approve what the leadership team comes up with in terms of reductions to FY20 as a 2% to 5%. I don't want to move that forward to Chris without the school committee seeing that. But I also don't, I don't want to panic people either, because those reductions are going to be significant.
Yeah. So this, what, what, what you're proposing with these reductions wouldn't necessarily even take effect, right? They're just a proposed budget.
Correct, correct.
Okay, because I have some.
It's almost, it, it feels like preparing for a worst case scenario. And you know, we've done a lot of hard work in the budget with the community, you know, trying to be transparent. You know, I do, I understand Chris's perspective in having to plan for this. But I don't want to create panic in the community that, you know, what we recommend, you know, in terms of trying to present a balanced 1/12 budget is actually what will happen.
Because I'd have some significant concerns about approving anything without stipulations around it. Because once we approve something, then it becomes fact, right? And, and I don't, I don't want to be, you know, trying to show the wrong, the wrong thing. I, I honestly think that even, even the three months of 1/12 is probably not going to be enough to get us where we need, where, where we have all the information that we need to make a solid budget. And, and I would actually argue with the select board and finance committee, if that came to pass, that we do the three months and then in three months, we take a look and decide if we need to extend that any further or if we have enough information, solid information to do a real budget at that point. But that, that, that's just me speaking. I just don't think in the next month, we have all the parts and pieces that we need to understand with us.
Just a, a couple of things. One, I did watch the first few minutes of the select board last night, only because I saw on the agenda was budget. And obviously Chris did mention to the select board that he had sent out the memo for 2% and 5% cuts. And his tone was that the 5% cuts are pretty drastic and I don't think he's expecting the departments to make them, but it's, it's certainly an option that he wants to put out there. But it would be more realistic that we'd be looked upon to have 2% cuts. That was the tone that I, that I got from that, that the 5% was just kind of, you know, hope for the worst, but we shouldn't have to provide those cuts. And then just to put in context, context, a 2% cut would be about a couple hundred thousand dollars off of our budget. And a 5% cut would be a little over $500,000 off of our budget. So I kind of just want to just throw that out there for, for us to think about what that, how that actually impacts us going forward.
Yeah. So, so then my next obvious thing that I have to ask now is that 2% with or without the 305, which we typically get, like, because that makes a difference as to the size, but then does that mean we're automatically now not even going to see the 305? Or is it going to be what net school spending plus a little bit? Because the 305 is included in that. I mean, there's, there's a whole lot of things I, that, that, that I'd like to think about.
So.
So just.
My understanding of, my understanding of the request is that it is 2% reduction to your FY20 budget, which included the 305.
Right.
So that town parameter in FY20 was net school spending plus 305. And that the request is to reduce off of that number. Adam?
So, yeah, so just to be clear, so all I did was, so our, our total operating budget for FY20 was a little over 10 million. I didn't take into effect how we got the revenue. I just took into effect what it costs us to run the district, which is a little over $10 million, and then based our reductions upon that number. I didn't take offsets into account. I didn't take anything else into account except for the total amount that it takes for us to run the district, which is a little over $10 million. Again, I, I don't care how we, how we get to the number right now. I just wanted to, to know what our true cuts would be and it would be to the total operating budget. So again, 2%, would be a little over 200,000 and 5% would be a little over half a million dollars. So.
Yeah, I, no, no, I asked because if you, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jen.
No, you go ahead first, Mike.
Well, I was just gonna say, I asked because depending on how you look at it, you get, you know, different numbers, right? And like what's included, what's not included, and then bang. Okay, so that's answered. I understand.
So, so that, it brings up a good point, right? Because and we can certainly discuss it. Maybe the way I didn't do it is accurate, but it, it brings up a good point because technically, at the end of the day last year, and I always say like the, the town cuts us after, after indirect costs or in-kind costs, right? The town cuts us X amount of dollars. So should we be taking the cut off of that? Or should we be taking the cut off of our total budget? I, I took it over, I took it off our total operating budget, but it's, it's certainly a discussion that we can have how we would like to, to attack that. Because they, because Mike, to your point, they are, they are two entirely separate numbers, depending on how we, how we look at it.
Yeah, I'm going to let Jen speak next because she, she wanted to say something and I don't, and, and I think I might want to say something else, but I'm going to let her speak first while I formulate what I'm thinking.
So here's one of my, I'm going to call them blonde questions because I, I still trying to learn whole budget thing. But I mean, when we're talking about cuts, I mean, it seems to me that we're going to have some increases in spending for facility stuff, like additional cleaning for, you know, sanitizing and possibly handing out masks to students every day as they come in and all of those things. So has, has there been anything that said, because I was looking through some of the governmental stuff and I'm just wondering, are they going to be providing some of that stuff to us? Or is that going to be something that we're going to, you know, stuff we're going to have to add into the budget that can't be cut because we know we need to procure it? And should we be looking at some of that stuff now before, you know, costs go up? I don't know. Because maybe not, because maybe we won't be going back to school, but.
So Jen, those are really good questions. And again, we're just waiting on DESI to give that guidance for how to return to school before we start making any of those kinds of direct plans. Yes, if they're recommending that students are wearing masks, staff are wearing masks, that we're practicing social distancing. You know, all of those costs have to be embedded in the budget. And I think to Mike's point, that's one of the sort of criteria that we have to make very clear to the town departments when, when we have a joint meeting that, you know, yes, this is our budget, but it's our budget without any extra expenses due to COVID-19 and how we return in the fall. We may get some guidance in time, you know, to have a projection, but you know, I think we have to be very clear that we anticipate that there are going to be additional expenses and those are unanticipated. And, you know, until we have more guidance, you know, we will most likely be back asking for additional funding. If we're asked to make these kind of cuts to the, to the budget. Because this budget, the cuts to the budget are the budget as is. It doesn't include any of the additional costs to return to school.
And then my last question, well, next question, I won't say last, is are, are other departments being asked to submit cuts to their budgets as well?
Yeah, it went to everybody.
It was, it was a townwide memo.
Okay.
Yep.
I just wanted to double check. I figured, but I just was curious.
Yeah. Just a comment, if I could. Obviously, I pick it up in your ID, Cheryl, if we do need to meet next week to talk about this issue. I'm sure it'd be clear to get from Chris Martin. I agree with the 2% to 5%, but 2% off of what figure will be the key thing to have. So there's no confusion about, you know, other costs, whatever, 2% off of what figure? And then that's the figure that, you know, you are talking with your team about what you may have to reduce necessary. Then there's no confusion about, should have been this one, should have been that one. Chris seems to know. So what, what figure do you want us to take 2% off of?
Yep, absolutely.
That'd be great.
And I, I, yeah, I do want to say Chris has been a great partner through all of this. You know, this is very stressful for everybody. You know, we've been together, I think, really patient and trying to work through this. But we're at the point where we just don't have the information yet. And we do have to start planning based on what we're hearing in terms of revenue reductions, municipal reductions. You know, the lack of unrestricted government aid, you know, all of those things that, you know, you can anticipate that the legislature would be looking at to reduce to balance a budget when the revenue looks so poor.
Right.
So.
Good.
I just, I just hope that we understand as a, as a group, I mean, a larger group that the, I think the worst thing we can do is rush into something, not, you know, to have something done and not make sure that we have, you know, everything. Not make sure that we know everything that we need to know before we finalize anything. Our.
Right.
I mean, that's just my opinion. Did anybody else want to say anything? Jen, Emery?
Are people, are people able to meet next week, perhaps next Tuesday?
Tuesday worked for me.
Same time?
Yep.
And we don't pull out anymore?
Alright.
Tuesdays.
Are we expecting it to be a long meeting, Cheryl?
No, really, it's just to go over what we recommend as the DLT to the reductions in the budget. So it basically just be a list, you know, here are the two budgets. This, this is a 2% reduction. This is a 5% reduction.
I think I'm good next Tuesday.
Okay.
And it wouldn't be necessarily a vote, right? It would just be more like an FYI, this is the information we're sending.
Right, right. It, it's what we would be proposing as reductions. Because we don't have the numbers yet. And I think that's, you know, that's where, where we're really anxious because we could get numbers, you know, in the next month that say, you know what? You know, we are going to leave the school department budgets alone. We're not going to, you know, we're going to go with FY21, chapter 70 and net school spending and then, you know, we'll, we'll actually be okay. Or they could look at chapter 70 and net school spending and readjust. You know, I, I don't have a crystal ball, but what I would say is, you know, the Student Opportunity Act was passed, it's law. I can't imagine that they would go back and cut into the finance part of that below this year's, you know, below what they, what they want for this year. So we didn't get a lot of Student Opportunity Act money in chapter 70. But what we did get is the net school spending increase, which was an acknowledgement that we have been chronically underfunded for things like special education, healthcare, health insurance. So for them to go back on that, you know, that, that's going to be very problematic for, for many districts like us, but also, you know, some of the larger districts that looked at large increases to chapter 70. So I don't, like I said, I don't have a crystal ball, but I don't see it happening. But I understand Chris's concern and, and unfortunately, we have to be prepared for that worst case scenario.
Okay. And then Adam, do you have a, do you have a report?
I don't, but as, as far as FY21, we obviously talked about that. We just, we just had a warrant today. So if we can meet Tuesday, I can, before we get into the FY21 talks, I can go over where we're at for this current fiscal year and have those discussions next Tuesday.
Okay. Jen, you say it was the end of the month you were going to meet with CES?
Yes, and I sent out an email regarding our conversation last week about the extra funding. So that's a discussion that we're going to have that all the towns. See if the collaborative can create a grant for the surrounding towns. So we'll discuss that. It's, our meeting's next week.
Like I got to the bottom of the agenda. I'm scared because it's only. Like I got to the bottom of the agenda. I'm scared because it's only 8 o'clock. Did I miss anything?
Yeah. You covered it, Mike.
All right. Did anybody have anything that they wanted to share at this point? Or, or I'll, or I'll also take, you know, the motions to, to adjourn.
So are we on for next, are we on for next Tuesday? Just want to make sure that we're on for next Tuesday, 6:30?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
I made the motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Is Jacqueline on?
I saw her name earlier.
You're on? Okay, can you make sure that you and I post that agenda tomorrow?
I'm sorry?
Can you make sure that we post that agenda tomorrow for next Tuesday?
Sure.
And have that.
Thank you.
Information on the bottom.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and I think I heard two motions, one, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. See y'all next Tuesday.
Yeah, have a good night.